And I told him my sad story.
Great. Good morning. It's 10 o'clock. We're going to go ahead and get started.
They made me file some paperwork, and next thing you know, it's getting noticeable.
Okay, it is Monday, July 17th, 2023, 10:00 AM, and this is our city council work session. And in our work sessions, we just get right down to business. These are less formal meetings that give us a chance to discuss items that will be on future council agendas usually. And there is no voting that takes place at a work session, and these meetings are available to the public to view and watch, but there is no public participation in these meetings. And we will jump right into business. So the first thing on our agenda today, as it usually is with one meeting each month, is introduction of new city employees who have joined the city since we last had a chance to do this. I will turn it over to our HR Director, Terry Wilcox, to kick us off. We have quite a few new employees today.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Today, it is my pleasure to introduce six new employees to the city, and we will start with the Police Department. And Blaine, can you just go ahead and do all three?
Yep, you bet. So we have, first of all, our two, well, no, it's going to be Paul. So Paul Eller, welcome back, Paul Eller. For many of you, you know Paul. Paul was prior, previously a Montrose Police Department Sergeant with our agency and kind of moved into a emergency manager role. He worked for the state of Colorado for 10 years, managed multiple different emergencies for the state, and is now back with us. And we're so happy to have him serving in our new City of Montrose Emergency Manager role. So with that, Paul, do you want to introduce yourself and say a little bit?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, esteemed council members. As Chief Hall said, I'm Paul Eller. I was a previous employee here from 1987 to 2013, when I retired as a sergeant with Montrose Police Department. Went to work for the state of Colorado as a disaster manager, got the experience of many of Colorado's worst disasters in its history, and retired from there a few months ago and was fortunate enough to be able to come back to the Montrose community as the new city emergency manager. And I'm glad to be back. My wife and I are glad to be part of the community again and look forward to doing great things within the community. I have four children scattered across the country, 13 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. I love to be outdoors and do all sorts of photography and play golf. So it's my pleasure to be back and part of the city again. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Okay, next we have up is Tina Sullivan. Tina is one of our two new, or one of two new civilian report takers. And so Tina, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, good morning. I don't do public speaking, first of all, so this makes me very nervous, but I was born and raised in Akron, Ohio, raised two kids there. I lived in, I went to Whittenburg University in Special Ed and Mathematics. Kind of strange to be here now. Then I lived in Santa Fe and Albuquerque about a year each, and my son, who lives in Ridgeway, and his family had the first grandbaby. So that's how I ended up in Montrose. I've been in Montrose for five years now. My daughter is in Albuquerque, and her family, they had their first grandchild. He is two years old. And I love, I love Montrose. I love swimming, need a word, reading, gardening, the normal stuff. And that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Charlie Hunt. Charlie is also a civilian report taker. And an interesting fun fact, I worked with Charlie's dad, Jeff, in Ridgway when I was down there for a short time. So Charlie, take it away.
Hi, I'm Charlie. Good morning, everyone. I was born in Columbus, Ohio. We moved out to Ridgway, Colorado, when I was about five years old. My parents separated, and my mom moved us up to Montrose when I was about nine. My dad was a police officer in Ridgway for about eight years and now is in Houston, Texas. Me and my girlfriend just had a baby three weeks ago. And I'm very excited to have the job with Montrose Police Department. I do plan on eventually going into law enforcement and becoming a police officer, so I'm very glad to have the opportunity to have the job here. And I love hiking outdoors, golf as well. And I'm just really happy to be here.
Thank you. Where? The question is where in law enforcement?
Where in law enforcement?
Yeah. Where are you going to get a job?
Here.
Okay, thank God.
All right, and I'll start with Travis. Couple of exciting things about Travis Tree. She, first off, is a returning employee. So he was in our Streets Division previously and is back with us now. And also, the street cleaning position is a new position. We transitioned a street worker position into a street cleaning position, where obviously they mainly focus on street cleaning and that sort of thing. So Travis, I'll let you tell everybody more about yourself.
Thanks, Jim. Good morning, everybody. My name is Travis, kind of a transplant originally from Texas, moved here whenever I was about 15. It's probably the best thing you could have in Texas. It's super, super hot. I talked to all my friends back there, and they're dying in the heat. Tell them to come up here and visit all the time. Avid outdoorsman, go fishing basically every chance that I get. If you want to know any good fishing spots around here, I can definitely fill up some, fill up some time telling you about that. Like Jim said, I'm coming back in a Streets Cleaner Operator. Super excited about. I enjoy operating backhoes and all the stuff, all the toys that we got. That's, that's just about me. Appreciate it.
All right, and the next one, V. Braden Reader, returns to us. He is also a previous employee, worked in our Facilities Division, and is now back with us as a Facilities Maintenance Foreman. And very excited to have him back. Comes with a lot of knowledge of our own buildings. Definitely prevents us from having to go through an extensive amount of training. It often takes years for, for an employee to know and understand all of our different facilities. So he comes with a big head start. So Braden.
And today is his first day back.
That's right.
Thank you, Jim. So lots of familiar faces. So I was with the city for a while. I was the lead technician. So I've walked a lot of miles in all these buildings here, but there's quite a few new additions. Looking forward to learning the new Police Department and also the new City Hall. I moved to the area in 99 and married a local girl here, and I'm raising a family. And just looking, looking forward to serving the community and trying to keep these buildings running properly and safe. And please let me know about all the maintenance situations so I could stay on top of it. But thank you very much, and I look forward to it. And the city was a great organization, is a great organization, and always made me feel like family. So thank you.
I'd like to introduce Nathan Hughes. He's the newest member of our Pavilion Team. He joined our staff a couple of weeks ago, and he comes to us with a lot of relevant experience, especially in the area of audio, audio/video production for events. And I will let Nathan introduce himself.
Morning, I'm Nate Hughes. I've lived in Montrose since I've been about five years old. When I was at high school, I ran all the livestream events for the high school sports and other events that we did. TEDx, did a graduation. I went to college in Glenwood Springs for basically continuing it, but I just did visual media. Now I'm back doing event work, and I'm excited to be back and help out.
Great, thank, great, thank you very much. And everyone, welcome to the city, or welcome back to the city. We're glad to have you here. And you probably have a full day of training now, so thanks for coming. You can go ahead and keep, go into your next meeting. Okay. That guy that we haven't seen for a while? Okay. Next on our agenda, we move on to discussion items. Like I said, these are usually things that will come before us at a later time for a vote. This is usually our first introduction to getting into the meat of the item. And so, and some of these, including our first one, are things that we see every year. And so first would be our Victims Assistance Law Enforcement or Vail Grant Application. And I'll turn it over to Police Chief Blaine Hall.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Won't read this to you verbatim, but I come before City Council every year to discuss this. This is not something that's new, but just a brief overview, we have now two, with your permission and the City Management's Office permissions, Victims' Service Persons. One's a Victim Services Coordinator, and that's Chantel, who's seated in the back in case you have any questions. And then Amy Wellington is our Victims Advocate. The Police Department now runs seven days a week Victim Services, which is awesome for us and really the surrounding agencies to have assistance in that Victim Services area. We have seen a slight increase in the number of victims that we have served this year compared to last year, year-to-date. Most of those are child sex assault victims, unfortunately, that, that increase shows. So with that, both of those positions are funded through grants. Half of both of those positions are funded through the Victims Assistant Law Enforcement Grant and then a federal grant of, it's called VOCA, and that will be coming up later on. So with your permission, we would like to apply for $30,150 for the Victims' Advocate or the Victim Services Coordinator position and $25,000 for half of the Victims' Advocate position for this grant cycle with Vail. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. It doesn't look like there are any questions. I think we've all seen this before. Next is Resolution Rescinding the Public Health Emergency, and our new Emergency Manager, Paul Eller, will tell us about this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, esteemed council. I'm here before you today to request, on behalf of the City Manager's Office, a rescension of the Emergency Ordinance 2500, which was the Public Health Emergency Order, which was declared on March 17th, 2020, in reference to the COVID Public Health Emergency, and coincided with the state and federal declarations that occurred that week as well. We would, or that emergency was declared in authorities under Colorado Revised Statute 2433.5709, which allows local jurisdictions to enact an emergency declaration, and under our own City Ordinance 1-22, which allows the City Manager to declare an emergency in order to protect the public and the environment. With this resolution to rescind that order, it should be noted that on May 11th of 2023, the President and the Governor of the State of Colorado rescinded both the federal disaster declaration and the state disaster declaration for COVID through executive order. And therefore, we are respectfully requesting that City Ordinance, Emergency Ordinance 2500, be rescinded to reflect that the disaster is over for the City of Montrose as well. And at this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Make sure you're talking to the mic, please.
Hello? I want to address this to the City Manager. How does this affect the ARPA funds? I know that they were issued under the emergency declaration, and I was just curious as how they impacted what little we have left.
So they're totally, even though the ARPA funds came out of the nation's needs during the pandemic, they're not related to where they're tied together via our local emergency declaration. So it really doesn't affect the remaining ARPA funds at all. So we had, we also had the COVID-19 funds and the ARPA funds. So we had two separate pots of money we were working with under the Relief Acts, and this one is standalone.
So they're standalone. Okay. Thank you.
Doesn't look like there are any other questions. Thank you very much.
All right. It should be noted that there is a report required to council within 30 days of rescinding that order, and I will be working on that in cooperation with the City Manager's Office to meet the 30-day deadline.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next up is Disposal or Sale of Police Radios and Deputy Police Chief Tim Cox. No, your Chief Hall is going to tell us about it.
Okay, Madam Mayor, City Council, come before you today to discuss with you the disposal, actually sale, of six of our mobile PAC sets. They're radios that are much older, but Olathe Police Department has contacted us and stated that they have a need for them. And these radios have already been replaced through our radio interfund lease, and so we have the new replacements already. And we can sell these really just for a $100 administration fee per radio, and it'll help support Olathe Police Department.
Fantastic. Great. Looks like it's pretty straightforward and there aren't any questions. Okay, great. Next up is a Abatement Assistance Request by Eldorado Financial, and so I will turn it over to City Manager Bill Bell.
Thank you. Normally, Anthony Russo would do this presentation, but he's traveling for business at the moment, so I will be presenting. In the packet, you have a grant request from Jim Elder with Eldorado Financial. It describes the project. He is looking to demo the 1030 and 1048 South Towns and Locations where Buckhorn Coffee was located, and build a newer building upstairs would be rented out as office space. Downstairs would be the new Eldorado Financial Office Expansion Location to allow him to create more jobs here in the community and do a facelift for that part of Towns. And those buildings are pretty old and dilapidated. That will be demoed. The project budget is $2 million. The request, as outlined in the memo, was for anything, Anthony talked to Jim about anything and everything the city normally would look at as an eligible expense. Doesn't always mean we're going to do or recommend approval to the City Council, but on here, it shows everything that's eligible. So out of the $2 million project budget, you'll see in there the $2,958. He had an asbestos study done. Our policies say that if the work's already been done, then we don't, it's not eligible to be paid out. But he wanted to include that so he could see the full cost of the asbestos mitigation. So we're not asking or recommending approval for assistance on the 2,958, but we are recommending to the City Council consideration of the $50,881.10, which has an accompanying invoice or cost estimate from Extract Environmental Services for the asbestos abatement on the buildings. And then you'll see exterior cleanup, $40,000. That is a combination of demolition of the buildings, removal of the debris, general property improvements in that area to just clean that up, some sidewalk repair work and different horizontal site improvement work. Anthony and I are not recommending to the City Council approval of that $40,000 currently because we don't have a lot of details on what it would entail. It was just a cost estimate. And so we would, we would respectfully request consideration of just the asbestos estimate from Extract Environmental Services in the amount of $50,881.10. But be transparent with council that, as city staff, we will look for ways to help with removing debris like we've done for hospice and a variety of other businesses in our community. If we can provide a dump truck and help with the cost of taking things to the landfill, we'll talk to Public Works and see if we can do those types of things. And if we can, as a business incentive, fix up the sidewalk where it's broken there a little bit, in our regular budgets, we'll do that. And that would be included in that $40,000 there. Any questions on the project?
The only part that council would need to approve, though, when it comes before us is the asbestos abatement, right?
Correct.
Question I have is, did any of this go through DART, or was DART involved in this at all?
So I know Anthony had been talking to Michelle about it, but I don't know if this went to the DART meeting when I was out of town. I don't think it did. We were talking to them. We kind of do two different things. So Michelle talks to certain Main Street business owners on facade grants and those types of things, and then the programmatic side of, of small business. And then Anthony works with others that reach out directly to myself or Anthony on more of the business development side. This one's not really a facade grant program. It's separate because it's asbestos mitigation, which goes directly to the City Council. DART Board really wouldn't have authority to approve it. And so I doubt it was discussed at that.
Yeah, it looks like perhaps some of the paperwork indicates that that was originally the intention, but because it really isn't a facade grant improvement, it's bypassing the DART process and coming straight to council.
Yeah, if they were just updating the facade on the building, then we'd run it through the facade grant program.
Any other questions from council?
Well, I guess if, if it does, okay, we're looking at, at $50,000 for environmental asbestos abatement, and we've done it for other businesses in town. And then possibly looking at another $50,000 for a DART grant, because I believe it was brought up before DART. My mind's been elsewhere for a little bit, but I thought it was brought up before DART. And, which means that we would be contributing a little over $100,000 to develop a new commercial building in town with, and I was just curious as to how does, when it's a commercial building like this, how does the city derive its revenues to keep, keep generating these funds rather than upstate business promotion? I know that I looked at the information, and it said it generates a million, two million revenues. My question was, for eight employees, that's over $150,000 or $60,000 per employee. Is that going to generate more revenues specifically for the city rather than just income for the employees or the owner of the building? Because it's going to be, he'll have another building that he's going to be able to rent out for, to generate revenues to help pay for this business. And then he'll have a whole upstairs for offices that he'd be able to generate revenue. And is the city eventually going to be too generous for that kind of a business instead of some retail or something that actually would generate revenues for the city to help pay for continued businesses to come into Montrose and, and develop their business here?
I think all those are really good questions. The way to look at it, the way I would describe it out if a citizen asked me the same question, is that we kind of look at business development in Montrose in a few different veins. So one is we look at retail businesses that generate sales tax. And so we help those businesses by, we help them expand if they need to and be able to add more employees or, or really just broaden their business scope. We attract in new retail businesses, not necessarily for the jobs they're creating, because retail a lot of times means low-paying jobs, just a lot of them, part-time and mixture. But what it does is it creates vibrancy for the community's economy. So retail, we do look at it from, and that's why you've seen a lot of those applications, where it projects all their sales for three years, and how much money is it going to generate for the community on the retail sales side. This one is a little different. So there's other properties and businesses that we partner with to clean up dilapidated and, and old and properties in our community that are an eyesore or a safety hazard. And this is the vein that this one falls into. Similar to some of the old buildings on Main Street, we have asbestos mitigation, fire suppression systems to help reduce the risk of fire in the old 100-year-old buildings, electrical upgrades over the years, those kinds of things that help to make sure the buildings in our community are safe and attractive for the next 50 years. Or we'll take dilapidated buildings and help demo those and remove them and bring new buildings to replace them, like we did with hospice between Park Avenue and the hospital, the new Hope West building there. We went in with Public Works, City and County, and demoed the blighted homes that were in that area to allow for them to build their new building. And so now when you drive up and down that corridor, instead of two old, rundown houses, you see a nice, beautiful facility. So this would be more along the lines of building rehabilitation and cleanup for our community, not business sales or retail. And then a whole nother one, we look at our service-type businesses, which this one falls into, or more of the industrial type that MEDC would work with. And those businesses, we support for job creation. And in this case, adding new areas for office space also helps other businesses that need office space to expand. They can go into this area, and it, the money paid to those employees then gets spent out in our community and just helps create that cycle of new jobs in the community, higher paying salaries and that type of thing. So we talk a lot on that side, on high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs that pay a livable wage. And this is a business that's a great example of paying a livable wage to their employees. And so we have all that data. It went through Region 10, as outlined in the memo. They do all the credit and background and financials and everything to make sure they're financially sound. We don't look at it and say, we want to help with asbestos because you're financially sound. But we look at all those things to make sure it's a good partner and a good investment. And we would recommend, in this case, partnering with Eldorado Financial. They are a stable business. They've been here a long time. They're expanding. They're taking old dilapidated structures, getting rid of those and replacing it with new. So for the next 50 years, right along Towns and in that stretch, we have something good to look at. And then they also offer high-paying jobs. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
There's just a lot of different things we look at with business development.
And the sign with all the nice quotes on it, going to be moving down.
He mentioned that and said it's world-renowned or something in here, so probably, I think the sign won't go away.
I have a follow-up, I have a follow-up, well, comment, I suppose. I like the ones that have a direct sales tax benefit to the city a little more, but I can appreciate all those other aspects you mentioned. I do appreciate staff's recommendation not to fund any exterior cleanup, at least without more information, because there are some of those services that we can provide in kind. And I'd rather do that than pay, pay cash.
I do have one more question. Where are the funds?
Could you make sure your microphone's on? Thank you.
Where are the funds going to be coming from?
Oh, yeah, I didn't answer that part.
I don't remember reading it in the.
It's, so the way we've budgeted at the city for things like this is we don't know what projects are going to come up throughout the year. And that's another reason it has to go before City Council. I don't have authority to just spend money that wasn't in the budget. And so this would be a request to take the $50,881.10 out of our general undesignated fund balance.
And what is that?
Basically, it's our savings account, for general fund.
Okay. And what's the balance on that? Do you, do you know off the, I was expecting a financial report in my paperwork, but I didn't see it.
Off the top of my head, I do not know.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but I'll send an email out and let you know as soon as I talk to Shani and get an updated number.
I might ask Shani to send me the sales tax information to me.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Any other comments on this one?
I just want to mention, you're not voting on anything today, so I'll make sure you have the revenue side and our fund balances before the next.
That would be great.
That would be great. Okay, next up is assignment of private activity bond allocation to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, otherwise known as CHAFA. We see this every year as well, and I will turn it over to Community Development Specialist Chris Ottinger.
Morning, council. I'm Adam Mayor. It's good to be with you this morning. As you just mentioned, you guys have already seen this once before, a few times maybe. Just a bit of background for those who are listening. Private activity bonds are special funds allocated by the IRS, bonding authority to local governments via the state for development of different projects, including affordable housing, as well as assistance with down payments for homes, things of that nature. So, this year's allocation was $1,125,667 to the city of Montrose. And, I'm sorry, $245,218. That was, previous was last year's. Staff is requesting that we allocate this to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority because we do not want to take on the burden of issuing bonds ourselves. I'd be happy to answer any questions at the end. Just as a recap for last year, we actually funded through CHAFA 17 loans totaling $4,500,000 at a median income of $70,666 for a median loan amount of $268,492 in the Montrose area.
I think it's important to understand, we aren't giving up money. We are allowing them to bond, and we feel like they are in a better position to issue those bonds than the city of Montrose.
Correct.
And they use those in our community to do good things.
Yes, they take on the administrative burden that we otherwise would have to manage to do any of these sorts of things.
Kind of sounds like we're giving them money, but we aren't.
It doesn't.
It's a little confusing in that regard.
This is all state allocation.
Any questions from council?
We've done it in the past.
Yep.
I think it's good.
I do like seeing that they are making good projects through CHAFA and through these funds and the work they're doing in our community is, is, it's good.
Absolutely. And for future reference, too, we are going to have setting a deadline for anybody who is coming to Montrose to build affordable housing. We will be setting a deadline and more policy around this. CHAFA will still be doing our administration, but should a project come up in the next year or so for the next allocation, we'll reference them to CHAFA to be able to allocate some of our bond to them.
It sounds like you're trying, you're saying that we want to really try and push folks to use that.
It's an avenue for Lytech, low-income housing tax credit avenues. You have to use PAB as a part of the financing mechanism.
Thank you very much. Next up is, gosh, it feels really crazy to talk about snow and ice removal when it is supposed to maybe hit 100 degrees today, but I suppose this is what planning for the future looks like. And so, I will turn this over to, oh, gosh, we've got the Public Works Director and the Streets Division Superintendent and our Parks Division Superintendent all here to talk about a snow and ice removal ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Good morning. Yeah, so you beat me to it. I was going to start off with, why would we talk about this in July? It's supposed to be 100 degrees today. So, what we are talking about is updating our current city code related to snow removal with an ordinance to formalize responsibilities and give means for enforcement for violations and improper activities. Now, we're also creating and documenting a policy for snow removal that would be promulgated into our regulations manual by the city manager, but they're related, so we're talking about both of them here today. So, again, why do we, why are we doing this now? So, this has been something on our, on our minds for years. And oftentimes, by the time we get our first snow in October, it's, this is quite the process to get through. Our legal team has been very involved and very helpful in this, but it's taken quite some time. And we wouldn't want to implement anything new like this mid-season. So, we're trying to get it in place ahead of time so that we can talk openly about it and even promote it and advertise as snow season starts to approach. But it's been something we've been working on for several months here to get this prepared. So, the ordinance is, the reason it's coming before us, and there's quite, there's several items in it, we'll review each of them in detail, but the main reason is related to depositing of snow in the right-of-way from private property. That's really the main driver of why we're here and some of the complications that come from that, mostly on the commercial scale, where we have large amounts of snow deposited in the roadway, causing drainage issues, traffic issues, site issues, things like that. And that's really the driver behind developing this ordinance in the way we have.
Since that's the driver, can I rephrase that and see if I understand what you're saying? Like, so, when people, let's, I'll just use myself as the example. If I push the snow off of my driveway and sidewalk into the gutter, then that creates drainage issues that really impact the city. And if that's happening on a small residential scale, that only gets much larger and a much bigger problem if it is a commercial, private parking lot along Townsend, for example.
That's right.
So, we're going to clarify some rules because it really does impact the city's operations when it isn't done the right way.
Correct. Yep. Yeah, you're right on. And even at the residential level, it can have a big impact. It's relatively smaller lots, obviously, but, you know, the drainage is the first issue, but then that oftentimes creates an ice dam or ice plug, which you'll end up parking further out into the roadway, which causes a traffic issue. So, definitely, snowballs, if you will, is to one small issue into larger issues, even at the residential level. I would say the commercial is definitely the more obvious one, where you see a mountain of snow pushed into the road, but even at the residential level, it can be an issue.
So, that's the problem we're trying to fix?
Yes.
That's the reason to review this and update it?
Yep, exactly.
Jim, it seems like to me, when I've seen some of those conditions, we've got a lot of small businesses around who take on scooping blocks and driveways, and they are shoving it out into the street. Do we have a really good, effective way of communicating with those people?
Yeah, definitely. I think, well, it's mostly contractors. So, we know most of the contractors in the area, if not all of them, that do snow removal for businesses. And that's where we're able to help get ahead of this is by talking with them ahead of time. Most of the snow removal issues we have come from contractors that are doing it on the bigger scale. On an individual basis, we're able to just talk to them individually as issues may come up, but the contractors are something we're able to communicate with ahead of time.
I like the idea. The only thing is, I have a couple of issues, problems. It says in here 24 hours to shovel the snow off your sidewalks and stuff. I live in a neighborhood that has quite a few older people, and some of these older folks don't usually get out within 24 hours after a snowstorm to shovel. Either that, or they have to wait for the next-door neighbor, the younger person, to come over and shovel. And I think that perhaps maybe we should change that to 48 hours or something like that, to give them a little bit of time to make the arrangements that perhaps they haven't made in the, in the past, now that we're going to, now that we have regulations or will have regulations to support it. The other issue that I have was the fact that in some residential areas, people have to park their cars out on the street because there's not enough parking in their driveways or whatever. And to sit there and say that, again, this is a Tier Four, which the odds of a city vehicle coming through and moving some of the snow, that they could have their cars towed away if they're parked in the street, blocking the snow. I mean, I could see a point if they were truly blocking the street, but to have somebody parked in the parking space in front of their house, and then the, the street snow plow comes by and, and has to move over just a little bit instead of get close to the curb, calls and has their car towed away. I think that's kind of draconian. Myself, I wouldn't, I don't park out in the street because I have a really big driveway. And take my word for it, shoveling is not fun. But for some of the neighbors that have, that live in a corner in a circle, the parking spaces are very limited if they're not being able to, so, I was just thinking that perhaps maybe some kind of a notice or something might be more appropriate than calling and having their car towed away.
Absolutely. So, on-street parking in residential areas would not be affected by this at all. That's, the only area that we would, the parking would be addressed with snow removal would be downtown, and it would be signed. So, we would, if we, our intention is always, I think of Main Street, of clearing the parking spots on Main Street first. And in that case, they'd be signed as no parking to allow us to get our snow removal done, and then obviously, signs would be removed. But in a residential area where we clear the street or the driveline of the roadway, we would not be removing vehicles that are parked from on-street parking.
Okay, I was just curious because it didn't say, that didn't explain it for a residential area. It just, I assumed it was arbitrary that anybody was affecting the street would be towed away.
That's probably, that's probably to allow some flexibility, and your intent is to only use it with signage downtown. But let's say we got a really big snowstorm and we were able to start clearing some residential, we could put signage up there and say, "Hey, we're going to actually come through here and help you all out by removing the snow, but we need you to move your cars in order to do that." So, it probably leaves us the flexibility to clear residential streets if we needed to.
Yeah, absolutely. And the policy and ordinance are both intended to be flexible because every storm is completely different. So, you're right, if there was a storm where the accumulation was significant enough where we felt like clearing some parking areas was needed, we would do that, and we would do it as the best way possible, signing it ahead of time if we can, or asking people to move their cars, things like that would be done. I would say in residential areas, that's pretty rare. I don't know that we've ever come through a neighborhood and tried to clear all on-street parking, but it is worded to be flexible, and so that if that comes up, obviously, we'd be reasonable how we approach property owners and things like that. So, if you'd like, I can kind of continue through this. I was going to...
Yeah, sorry, I got us off and, sorry. We kind of went down a bunch of questions. I guess what's exciting to know, we're interested.
Yeah, yes.
Let's let you finish.
Snow removal in July. All right. So, one of the reasons why we're, also, this has become a little more, putting a little more emphasis on this now, is because of some of our operations have transitioned as well over the last few years. We've moved a lot of our snow operations into the early morning, really with the focus of being out of our, our high-traffic areas prior to 7:00 a.m. And that's, we've always worked at night to some extent, but have, in the last few years, really pushed for that. There's, there's a few reasons why. I think safety is probably our primary reason, in that removing snow and picking up snow is, it can oftentimes congest the roadway, and our traffic, we see by 7:00 a.m. is pretty, pretty intense. So, we try to get our operations out of the way prior to the road getting busy, our safety and the public's safety. It helps us with level of service, so we actually do a much better job if the road is cleared or, you know, there's not traffic in our way. We're able to do a much better job, and parking areas are a good example of that. And then just that, again, the traffic themselves kind of preventing us from truly removing it prior to getting turned into snowpack. So, that's what's really pushed us to move our operations earlier in the morning, which the contractors that we, we often see pushing snow from private lots do their work later in the morning, later than us. And so, they may pile something in the street after we've already come through and, and with no intention of coming back to that street, have piled something in the roadway. And so, that's something we've seen more problematic in these last few years, and that's, again, one of the drivers behind having this conversation. And some of the contractors are requiring proof or an ordinance to back this up. We've requested it for many years and put it out as flyers and advertisements that please do not deposit snow in the roadway or the right-of-way. And some of the contractors are really saying, "Well, what, what city ordinance do you have to require that?" There is a state statute that does require that, but, but it is best as a support to a local ordinance, not necessarily a standalone statute. So, most other municipalities do have ordinances that are related to this, and then the state statute obviously supports this ordinance as well. The policy that's included in the packet is, again, describing our operation in a lot of ways in a very broad terminology to, that way it can apply to basically any storm. And there's no, this policy does not change anything. I want to make it clear that this is just documenting our current level of service and trying to clarify some of those things, but there's no change. This doesn't mean that this policy would change anything we do. We're always trying to make adjustments and be better, but the level of service that we provide is documented in this policy. So, speaking about the policy, I was going to have Nick and Dan, and I'm not really sure I introduced everybody when I started, so, sorry. Nick Pridey is our Street Superintendent, and Dan Payne is our Park Superintendent. Very, very involved in our snow operations and actually are the masterminds behind every different operation that we have related to snow. So, I was going to have them speak a little bit about the operational side of streets and parks real quick, talking about the policy. So, start off with Nick, if you want to talk a little bit about Streets Crew's operation for snow removal.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for introducing me, and good morning to all of you. So, really, this policy was formulated with the intention of clarifying our duties and ensuring the safety and welfare of the community and staff during snowfall and icy conditions. We, we wanted a document that we could put on our website to help citizens better understand our procedures and why we do the things we do. Additionally, we needed a solid basis for training new staff and emphasizing best practices to some of our seasoned staff. That being said, kind of piggybacking off of what Jim said, this policy doesn't necessarily change anything that we're currently doing, but it, it does help document it. And as a whole, this policy will only emphasize our commitment to providing effective and cost-efficient snow removal for the city of Montrose. As far as level of service goes, that is outlined within the policy. We wanted to outline how the city evaluates and prioritizes roads and snow removal based on their functionality, traffic volume, and importance to the welfare of the community. We wanted to provide a three-tiered level of operations, normal, serious, and extreme, to help classify varying snow events. These classifications will quickly describe the snow, the storm severity and where we are as a department. It also entails a little bit more clarification on our street classification and priorities. We explain our road, our road system and priorities classifying roads into our four tiers based on their importance and function. This policy stresses, stresses the importance of keeping Tier One roads, arterials, and emergency routes accessible and safe during any major storm event. We also wanted to clarify to staff and citizens our plowing methods and snow removal procedures. Explains the standard approach for snow plowing to minimize traffic obstructions and discusses the circumstances where removal of plowed snow will then become necessary. Outside the policy, just wanted to give a few updates on some more exciting things that will help us as a division. We did budget for the replacement of two older plow trucks, and it does sound like they're going to be here hopefully before snow flies, which would be awesome. These trucks will replace two older units that have been experiencing increased downtime due to age. The two new trucks will come fully equipped with some of the latest technology, which will significantly increase their efficiency. Furthermore, we're looking to outfit another three-quarter ton truck with a plow and a smaller standard just to help increase that level of service for our downtown area. And that's really it for our side of things unless you guys have any questions in regards to our operations and streets.
I just wanted to make sure that people understand that under Section 6121, unreasonable noise, the addition of the F that says that it exempts the city from this noise ordinance in order to provide the services that we need to get the snow off the streets early in the morning before people go to work and stuff like that. So, it's important that they know, and they're not complaining about the trucks driving around. uh, and that they're not complaining about the trucks driving around, uh, that they understand why they're doing that.
Yeah.
And that we do have an ordinance that exempts that.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. So in, uh, uh, parks, um, we work on clearing the snow downtown, uh, is our main priority. Um, we'll be working closer with streets, um, to try to get ahead of the, uh, um, snow removal in the parking spots, um, so that we're not flooding the gutter and causing issues and, uh, more curbing breaking out and, um, all the other issues it, it, uh, brings. Um, the reason why we're, uh, we do the down, just the downtown area, um, it's because of the proximity of the, the businesses, uh, the smaller storefronts. It's not really feasible for, for all those business owners to remove the snow themselves. Uh, where other businesses, you know, it's entire blocks and so it would be, you know, it would make more sense for them to remove their own snow. Um, as soon as we're done with, uh, um, downtown snow, we move into trails. Um, we currently have four routes now, um, to, and, uh, we try to get as much as we can in the same day. Um, but, uh, as the city keeps growing, uh, we're now down to two days, um, to get all the snow removed on trails.
Okay. So I, I just have a question. So it's the Parks Department is doing the snow removal on our public parking lots downtown and that would include our lots and public parking spaces on city streets? And you're saying that's where you start your work?
We start, yeah, the downtown area between Sea League and Park, um, North First to South First.
Okay.
We start by trying to get all the snow off the sidewalk first. Um, we put it into the street and then we come back with the truck and push it up to, to one end.
Okay.
Um, and then after that, that's when we get to the other parking lots like on, uh, um, North First and, uh, North Second.
Okay. And then when it comes to trails, um, are you prioritizing or could you, should you prioritize the trails and the sidewalks that are used by kids to walk or bike to school, especially if, you know, I mean, it's, if the temperatures are cold but not negative ten? Because I see that those get harder to remove the snow after they get used. Like personally, I drive by the one on Woodgate a lot and it just, it seems like-
It really comes down to staff availability.
Okay.
We can only be in one spot at one time. So, uh, downtown's always been a higher priority, um, just because, yeah, the traffic, um, starts really picking up around eight and nine o'clock.
Right. No, I mean, once you start working on trails, like the trails to schools-
Yeah.
-being a higher priority than the trail along the river, for example?
Yeah. Um, well, we all start from one spot and they just kind of work, work their way there. Um, we have, uh, one plow going to, to each school, basically.
Okay.
Um, heading to straight and, straight there.
Okay.
Yep.
I have a question. Did I hear you say that you shovel the sidewalks in front of the businesses?
Downtown.
Downtown?
Yep.
Isn't that the businesses' responsibility for the ordinance to take care of their own sidewalk? Uh, that's just a question.
Yeah.
Answer that.
Yeah. So, um, from Sea League to Park, um, we, as a city, um, operation do shovel the sidewalk and it's for a few reasons. I think Dan was speaking a little bit about the lot size, um, and the feasibility for property owners to be able to remove that snow, um, mainly because it's such a high pedestrian traffic area. Um, and, um, on one block of Main Street in that area, uh, there could be a dozen different property owners. And so, um, it seems much less feasible to have them each shovel their own small piece of, um, a sidewalk that is, uh, really important to our pedestrian activity downtown. And so that's why us as a, a city operation plow or shovel that portion of sidewalk and not others. So you may ask them, why don't we plow sidewalk on everybody else's? And it's, um, do that lot size and the activity downtown. So trying to keep our downtown, um, you know, as quickly and easily accessible on a snow day, um, where it would be most difficult for the property owners to do that.
I was just curious because downtown goes, uh, quite a few blocks in both directions and, uh, that's, that's a lot of work for the city employees to do.
It is.
Well, with those downtown areas, the only place they have to shovel the snow is back out into our street. They don't have anywhere else to go with it.
That's true. Yes.
So it ensures it gets done correctly.
That's right. Yep. And it's part of our operation. So obviously these guys are working together in that if we're pushing it off the sidewalk into the street, we are right there with another piece of equipment to remove it from the street. So they're, they're working together, whereas if you had a dozen different businesses doing it themselves, it would cause quite the issue of when and how that snow would be, uh, removed off there. So we're, we're, um, providing a service and, and streamlining what could potentially be a lot, a larger issue. Um, and again, it's just, I think by their crews doing it, it's a, it's a very efficient way of, of handling that issue. Uh, but we have defined the area for that and that isn't, I think it's important from Sea League to Park. Uh, now again, that is based on, you know, pedestrian activity in the area and also the lot size. So as you start to get out of that area, the lots start to get a lot larger where the businesses may have half of the block maybe their storefront. And that, that's where it becomes less, um, likely that this effect, this would be effective. Um, so that's why it is the area that we've defined between Sea League and Park. And then we include that in the policy, um, for this reason. I think there's a lot of questions about it. Why do we do it? Um, and we try to define that, um, explain the reasons behind us providing that service. But that's, that is something we consider as part of our level of service, um, and, and we've included that in the policy. Um, so with that, I think we're, you know, done with our presentation, but we're happy to answer more questions if there are any. Um, if there's anything specific to the ordinance, we can definitely read through that, but, um, kind of just, if you have any further questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
It looks like I did a little bit of looking up what other cities do. It looks like the 24 hours is pretty standard, but I would imagine we don't then look to go through residential areas and ticket people, but the 24 hours is pretty standard.
Uh, with the 24 hours, it's actually 48 hours total. So i- you have 24 hours to clear the sidewalk in front of your, your house and then you have to read it in conjunction with the, um, I believe it's nine-four dash, nine dash four dash two. Um, there, to be a nuisance declared, it's after your written notice, you have another 24 hours to clean up. So it's a minimum of 48 hours. So that's, that's why I wrote it like that, um, to give someone-
Yeah, it's after the snow stops.
Yes, after the completion. Exactly. So once the snowstorm stops, that's when essentially your time starts for the 24 hours. You would have to get someone complaining after 24 hours to then, uh, you, you get written notice where you have 24 more hours to clear the sidewalk.
I'm comfortable with that.
I, I just see it as another opportunity to get moisture on my yard.
Yes, yes.
And we also will have some map updates that we'll be bringing back to you later this year. Um, just in updating the route maps, um, we have several new road connections, sixty-seven hundred that, uh, Scott's working on right now, Woodgate Extension, uh, Hill Street. Those are new connections that have been made recently that our route maps need to be updated to show. And so later this year, once we get close to snow actually falling, uh, we'll bring that back to council for an update just to show our route maps and, and at that time, we can talk more about the, um, ordinances related to it and even our snow route operation.
Thank you. Okay. We can move on then to our next item is the Cerise Park Storage Building Expense Authorization. And this is also for you, Jim Schein, our Public Works Director, to tell us about.
Alright. Thank you. Um, so yeah, we are here to discuss the authorization of funds for the construction of a 24 by 48 storage building in Cerise Park. Um, the building have multiple uses, um, actually, um, likely divided into four different bays. Um, and it would be located near the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater. Um, in the packet, it did include a location map showing its relation to the amphitheater, um, and even a, a rough rendering of what the building may look like. Basically a lean-to, um, enclosed metal building, uh, with four large doors on one side. Um, one of the uses of the building would be, uh, for a police department, um, helping them to have a presence in the park system and for amphitheater-related events. Um, and Blaine can expand on their use of that if, if you would like. Um, but other uses would be for, um, temporary fence, fence panels, uh, for large events, um, storage for event organizers, um, and other equipment that would be utilized for parking and other things in, um, in the park. Um, so we issued an RFP for the design and construction of the structure. Um, as the design is relatively simple, um, or we proposed it as a pole barn style construction. Um, this, this model of design and construction for this type of work has worked well for us in the past, similar to, um, some of our park restrooms. We've done in the same model. Um, and we did receive one qualified bid from Stryker and Company, somebody we've worked with on several projects of this scale. Um, actually on the most recent park restroom, um, the North Connect Trail restroom was performed by Stryker. So, uh, they're, um, they're experienced with it and we're familiar with their work. Um, if this is awarded now, the project would likely, um, be completed in the spring of '24, uh, mostly due to the availability of building materials. Uh, we would, we would start now obviously with ordering those materials, but also with, um, installing access roads to, uh, to where the building's actually at. And that's what, that would be self-performed by our, our in-house crews, um, if providing access from the existing road at the amphitheater to this new site. Um, and then if, if completed in the spring of next year, obviously the goal would be having it available for event season. So definitely targeting, um, April of next year for completion. Uh, once construction starts, they're actually very quick. Um, these, um, from groundbreaking to completion are usually about six weeks. So, um, can go very quickly once we have materials. Um, it's split, it's starting now, um, it, the complication is it splits budget years. So, um, I'll get into the financial portion of it next, but, um, it would begin now and then span into 2024 for completion, which spans our budget year. Um, so as far as finances go, the Black Canyon Rotary Club would donate a hundred thousand to this overall project and there is forty thousand currently budgeted in the PD admin budget for this project. Um, the anticipated expenses in this year would be about eighty thousand. That's ordering building materials and then doing some of the site work. Um, leaving the, um, remaining a hundred thousand to be budgeted in next year about. Now, we're, uh, overall was one eighty-three. Um, I'm, I'm estimating about, about eighty of that would be expended this year. Um, and so the, the odd thing with it, even though the money is being donated, it's, um, needs to be budgeted for an expense from the city. So there, there would likely be a supplemental budget you may see later this year, uh, for this project. And it's, um, even though the money received is covering the expense, um, it was not budgeted as an expense. So you may see it as a supplemental even though the revenue is being, uh, recouped, if, if that makes sense. Um, and then we would also budget for the remaining portion of the project in, in 2024. Um, but again, is only a small portion that, um, is not covered by the money received from the Black Canyon Rotary Club. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I've got a question. Are we bringing, does, will the building have water, power, sewer?
No. It would have electricity and fiber, um, so lights and cameras-
Okay.
-as basically the operation. It would have a concrete floor, um, but other than that is just a storage building. So it is not an office building or anything of that sort. And no heat. It's not heated or insulated. It is just a shell for storage, uh, with electricity and then, uh, fiber for, um, cameras.
Right. And I would assume it would take the place of that little shed-like, trailer-like thing that's parked behind the amphitheater? Would that be removed?
That small shed that's there.
Yeah. Or is that still going to stay?
That, this would take the place of that. That was needed in the interim and-
Right.
-will be needed until that larger structure's built.
Is there any thought to doing more, um, infrastructure for this building such that it might allow us at a future date to construct public restrooms next to it?
Not at this time. And I think, um, even through design of the amphitheater itself, it was anticipated that, um, even a large restroom facility wouldn't be large enough and that you'd have to supplement with porta-potties for any event anyway. And so the thought was for events that porta-potties really are the solution for that.
Okay.
Um, I, I could foresee the restroom that's closer to the parking lot, the small restroom that's there-
Be expanded.
Being expanded and upgraded and, and giving, you know, uh, remodeled or just re- reconstructed at some point in the future.
Okay.
Uh, it hasn't risen to our, uh, highest on the priority list in parks yet, but I could see in the future that being a potential upgrade to the restroom, but not with the goal of serving an event.
Okay.
Um, because you could need fifty or more-
You couldn't build it big enough anyway. And okay, I just want to make sure we're, we're talking and discussing these items so two years from now, we don't say, gosh, we wish we would have at that time brought in sewer and, and water.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And if needed, uh, those utilities are in that access road to the amphitheater currently. And so, um, to add those utilities to another building, I mean, the, the utilities are nearby.
Right. Because they run into the amphitheater building itself. So, okay. Just want to make sure that, you know, we're looking at the big picture and planning far down the road.
Yeah.
But I think that is a great answer to my concern.
I, just for my own clarification, uh, on this contract administration and project finance, uh, the Rotary Club, Black Canyon is donating a hundred thousand dollars, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that has to go to the city and we put it, where, like in the general fund or something? And then, uh, we pull money out of, uh, the general fund, uh, say this year for the forty thousand and that goes to pay, uh, for, uh, the, the monies that'll come out for the, oh, for the materials and stuff? Or are we giving Stryker a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to include for the material? I guess I'm, I'm a little confused on that.
Stryker will only bill and we would only pay for, um, materials received, uh, or work completed. Um, so they likely this year would order the building's materials. Um, and if they arrive this year, which they're anticipating it would arrive in December, then we would pay for those materials, um, or any work completed, which could be some of the access road. We'll be installing a culvert and, and, and road base. Those materials would be paid for this year. Um, their overall, um, so Stryker would not be paid for anything beyond what was completed this year.
Okay. So in other words, the city's doing the infrastructure, uh, placement, this, the, uh, internet service, the road, the fiber, whatever's necessary for, uh, for getting the building prepared and then Stryker will actually just be doing the building?
Yep. They'll actually just put the building together in the spring of '24. They, they will be doing the electrical and fiber service as part of their contract. Um, we, internal to Public Works would be just doing the access road. Um, but either way, I only anticipate that approximately eighty thousand of that total would be expended in this year.
And, uh, that, uh, a hundred and forty thousand includes the, the infrastructure?
Yes. That, yeah, the hundred and eighty-three total includes everything. So that's Stryker's-
A hundred and eighty-three total and a hundred and forty-one to Stryker.
Correct. Yes. Hundred and forty is to Stryker directly and then a hundred and eighty is for all, all owner expenses and contractor expenses combined.
And then just to be-
Oh, okay.
Just to be clear on the Black Canyon Rotary Club, that's a pass-through from ARPA funds that we talked about at this year's budget when we were planning this project because it's not just for the Black Canyon Rotary Club. It meets our intent of putting that toward the nonprofits that use the amphitheater. And so, right now, if you go behind the amphitheater, all the nonprofits that use it for fundraising, whether it's All Points Transit with Oktoberfest or just a variety of the, plus the city events, you see cones stacked everywhere out there, bunch of different, um-
Types of supplies for all the events that happen at the amphitheater. So by giving it to the nonprofit and having them donate it back to us, it meets our original intent of using, utilizing the ARPA funds to help the nonprofits. So it's a way to subsidize the cost of a city project utilizing some of the ARPA funds rather than the entire amount would just be budgeted out of Public Works or Parks capital budget. So it allows us to do a transfer, which is a pass-through, just to be fully transparent on that. And not only the Black Canyon Rotary Club's materials will be in there, but all the materials used for any of the nonprofits. So the shared coolers, all the, the bars that were built to do beer sales, all those things will be stored in there as well.
Okay. So, uh, we're using ARPA funds to build this-
A hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand of it. But it's, uh, coming, it's, we're giving it to Black Canyon, then they're giving it back to us?
As a pass-through.
As a pass-through. Okay. So, uh, okay. I was a little confused there-
Yeah, I'm glad you said that.
-where the money was coming from in the first place.
I appreciate that explanation because that doesn't, it, that isn't in our packet and I think it helps to understand it. This isn't money the Black Canyon Rotary got from their members and is donating to the city. The city is, is giving money to, um, through ARPA- The city is giving money to, through ARPA, to support nonprofits. We're using ARPA funds for that. And then they are donating it back to the city to use for this project that benefits nonprofit events. Thank you. Any other questions for, either about the construction or about the funding for staff? Okay, I don't see any, so we'll keep moving. The next one, still you, Mr. Scheid, and that is fuel and oil, oh no, back up, authorization of a deed of easement on city property. And that would go to our attorney, Chris Dowsley, and Public Works Director, Jim Shipp.
Yeah, I can explain, and if needed, Chris can jump in and help me. So this would be for an authorization of a deed of easement to Clear Networks to run fiber underground at a location. I provided a map in the packet, but it is located near the roundabout at Sunnyside and Hillcrest on the Black Canyon Golf Course property. And so obviously, it's owned by the city, and that's why it's coming before you for authorization. So it's on the far southern edge of the golf course, well outside of area of play. It's really right along the fence line or very close to the fence line. But it is on city property. This area is already encumbered by other easements. There's a Bureau of Reclamation, Reclamation easement through there and also DMEA power easement. So the area is already, in a way, a utility easement, but Clear Networks does not have an easement there and needs their own to be able to utilize the area. So we are recommending approval of an easement for Clear Networks to use this small stretch for the underground piece. Once they actually come above ground, then they're on the DMEA poles and have an agreement with DMEA to use their poles. And that's where the easement we're talking about is only for the underground portion from really close to the roundabout to the first pole, and that's that yellow line on the map. Again, this doesn't affect the operations of the golf course. We may need to remove some fence sections to be able to actually do the installation of this underground section, but we're working with their contractor for installation on trying to make that as little impact as possible. One idea is to track equipment into the inside of the golf course, but we figured that would actually be easier to remove some fence. So we're going through those, kind of working with the contractor on the actual installation, but the long-term easement is not in the area of play of the golf course. So with that, again, we are recommending approval of this deed of easement, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Once, once they come out of the ground up by the pole, you said something about it's DMA, DMEA responsibility. Would we also require some kind of a service agreement if they use those poles for telecommu, or cable TV like we have for the phone, cable TV and all those other services?
DMEA has an agreement with Clear Networks for use of their poles. So it's a DMEA pole, and DMEA has an easement, a power easement to have those in that area, and Clear Networks has an agreement with them to use their poles.
Okay.
So we don't see more of these because deeply digital has been using DMEA's, or Clear Networks has been using DMEA's poles more than doing underground? Why, I'm surprised we haven't seen more of these.
So if they're going to be using DMEA's poles?
We don't see it.
We don't need to give.
This is the first time they've gone underground?
Right. Because they're actually using our property, so we have to allow them to go onto our property to maintain their, well, it's not technically a utility since it's fiber optics.
What if they were going underground in a, in a utility easement, but it wasn't our property? That would just be an existing use of a utility easement?
If it's a public right-of-way or if it's someone, like a third-party's property, I'm not sure.
I just am surprised we haven't seen more of these.
What makes this one more unique is it's on golf course property. So a lot of times, they are either in right-of-way or existing easements. In this case, there's an easement, but it's just a power easement. So in order for them to occupy that, either above ground or below ground on the golf course property, it's already encumbered, but, so this one's kind of unique.
Kind of unique. Okay. Great. Any other questions? Looks good. Okay. Now moving on to fuel and oil contract award recommendation, Public Works Director, Jim Scheid.
Last one for this morning. Yeah, so we are recommending award of a fuel contract to Parish Oil. The previous contract that we had, well, actually with Parish Oil, was set to expire this year, and so we're basically renewing our fuel and oil contract. And as I said, Parish Oil was our previous contractor for this, has been doing, they've been a great vendor to work with, and we're happy to recommend renewal of their contract. This time out, we only received one complete bid, and that was from Parish Oil. The pricing as part of the bid is consistent with what we're paying right now, and there were really no surprises as part of the proposal. The pricing we receive is, and it's included in the packet, is rack rate, so it's based on the day that that pricing is requested. And that's also how our pricing is achieved for when we order fuel. So it's on, based on a rack rate for that day. And they, they add their fee for delivery and things to that rack rate. And that way, we're able, as fuel prices change on a daily basis, up and down, that our price also changes with that based on a percentage of that rack rate. And so that is how our current agreement is and are moving forward. It's how our agreement will continue with Parish Oil. This is a budgeted expense within our fleet management budget, and we do anticipate that our estimated budget for 2023 will, will hold through the year. Fuel prices have actually not been higher than anticipated, so we feel like our fuel budget is, is pretty stable this year. As we're building budgets for next year already, we have an increase to the fleet size. We've added several vehicles, police department being one of those, but also other departments. We look at about an overall, about 2% increase to the fleet size. But actually, because of the use of a lot of hybrid vehicles, again, in the police department, we're not actually looking at an overall increase in fuel usage for the next year. So our overall budget for fuel would be very similar next year as it is this year.
I see it's a one-year contract with an option to extend for up to a total of three years. With that extension, does that come to council or what is that, what does that mean? And are we, did the contract we did for the, with them last year not have that extension, and that's why we're looking at it?
Typically, those extensions don't come back to council. In this case, it didn't. So we did do the same process three years ago.
Three years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, so we didn't see this a year ago. We saw this three years ago.
Correct.
Okay. Time flies.
Yeah, I know. It does. I thought the same thing. Oh, wow, it's over already.
But we did look at something last year. There's an amendment to the contract.
We may have had an amendment.
We did have an amendment to the contract.
So when there was some, that's right, there was, to their, the fee that they charged for delivery, I believe, changed, and it was the last year or the year before.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was an amendment to our agreement, and that's why it came back before you.
So once council votes on this, it will probably stay in effect for a total of three years, assuming the relation, the business relationship continues in a satisfactory way for both parties.
Correct.
Okay. No other questions then? Okay, then we'll go on to flashing crosswalk signage expense authorization. City Engineer, Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. So over the years, we've been working to improve with increased traffic, increased pedestrian activity. A lot of our recreational assets are growing, and so with that comes more need for pedestrian improvement. We've been looking to expand our solar-powered flashing crosswalk, crosswalks. And this is an extension of that. So as part of that, we budgeted $80,000 this year to add them to four intersections were identified in the budget. The first is Main and Junction, so if you remember, oh, it was probably a decade ago now, we put in the bulb outs there to try and improve pedestrian safety. Those helped, but we're just seeing more and more activity and more and more vehicles there. So we've had a lot of requests for flashing crosswalks at that intersection, so it's easy to retrofit those. The next is East Oak Grove and Rio Grande, so this is over by Stovers. This is the rec trail crossing there at the kind of southwest corner of that, of the Stovers site. Challenge on that intersection is it's uncontrolled, so it's mid-block and you're on a curve. Next is Chapita at the rec trail. So although Chapita Road is part of the county, it's a county, it's maintained by the county and it's their right-of-way. The rec trail is kind of a, primarily a city asset, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, fostering safety along the length of that regardless of the right-of-way. And then one of these is a replacement. I think it's been down for a little bit, but it's Colorado at Rio Grande, so that's near the Field House. A lot of times, kids are going to and fro between River Bob and the Field House there. We're using the updated style, so this is, we've tried, you know, kind of over the years, the first we implemented were the kinds that have the LED beacons around the outside part of the sign. Those are nice, but they don't catch your attention as good as this rectangular flashing beacon sign. So if you look in the packet, you'll see a sample picture there. They actually concentrate the LEDs. There's a lot more light and it's a lot more intense. We've been doing a lot of research on them, and it turns, or those do capture their attention a little better. Couple other changes we'll make, sometimes in some applications, if you push it, you don't know if it's actually flashing or not. So like, we have these little beacon lights on them, but they're not very big, so we'll actually go double-sided in cases like that, which helps, you know, make it really bright on both sides of the road as you approach, but also for the pedestrians' ease of making sure that they know that that light is flashing and can be comfortable to enter the crosswalk. I would also mention, we have a couple others going in this year as well. So at 6700, with the, the extension project going on there, there is a school zone nearby and a rec trail, a lot of elderly use. We are adding them there. They don't necessarily hit triggers yet, but we expect quite a bit of traffic increase on 6700 as all these projects get done. So kind of planning for the future on that one. And then we're working on a sidewalk connection between La Raza Park and the rec trail down by Base Camp Apartments near North Sixth. It's a mid-block crossing on Grand Avenue, which also is going to see a lot of uptick in traffic over the coming years. And we don't, you know, mid-block crossings, we try and avoid them where possible, but it's so far to controlled intersections there that there's really no other choice to get good connection there. So those are going in, but those are already budgeted or will be approved as part of those projects. That's why you're not seeing those as part of this. We are looking to buy them from a company called Traffic Signal Controls. Ryan went through this. He kind of spent quite a while, three to four months, going through all various vendors of trying to find the perfect one. And we've had, you know, because a lot of these things are pretty, you can find a lot out there that are pretty low-quality, require a lot of maintenance, and you're not really saving much. So these are a little higher costs than some of the others out on the market, but after a lot of research, they're the ones that would meet our needs the best. And so that's where that recommendation's coming from. We budgeted $80,000 for this. Still, depending on workload, whether contract the remainder or maybe do portions of the remainder, use some contracted help to get the foundations in form, but that leaves $19,000 in the budget, which we feel is plenty to accomplish that task. So for one sake, construction projects coming in on budget this year. Hasn't happened in a while.
Don't say that yet.
And so, no action here. We'd come in two weeks for the formal authorization.
Scott, I'd like to say that I really like this design, especially you said something about flashing light both sides. Recently, I was on Main Street, and both of the intersection lights were flashing and people were crossing, and they almost got ran over by a truck that either wasn't paying attention and didn't see the little flashing lights. As I got closer, I realized that the lights were flashing, because at first I thought the pedestrians were just crossing. But with this design, I believe on Main Street, as soon as possible, would be my preference, because again, I almost saw pedestrians, it was a man, a wife, and two kids, almost get struck by a truck that perhaps wasn't paying attention because, or they couldn't see those little lights going around. I didn't see them till I got almost up to the intersection. That's why I was concerned. And I'm thinking, this brighter light at a lower area is probably going to be a lot safer for the community when we install them, and I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a great point. I mean, this gives us a chance to disperse them in, you know, I guess ultimately in six or seven locations throughout town and get, see how they work, receive feedback, and then we can long-range plan if we want to upgrade those other ones or if they're similar. Because at the end of the day, there is no substitute for drivers paying attention as well. You know, we shouldn't even need the flashing part, but, you know, so it, it'll be great because we can collect data on all these various styles and see how they work and then decide which we'd like to use best going forward, you know, as we implement these elsewhere.
Yeah, because I think public safety is pretty important.
Sounds great. Okay, thank you. Next up is street closures with alcohol permits for Funk Fest and Monte de Rosa Fiesta. City Clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Mayor Bynum. As you mentioned, we did receive two applications for special events alcohol permits, and both are planned in conjunction with street closures. The first is an application from Black Canyon Boys and Girls Club for the Funk Fest event. The premises and the procedures are pretty much the same as in previous years, but Funk Fest will be a two-day event this year. So they plan on having alcohol on the premises of, on August 12th from 12:00 to 4:00 and August 13th from 12:00 to 6:00. Then the second application we received was from Mata for the Monte, Monte de Rosa Fiesta on August 19th, and they plan to have alcohol on the premises from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And their street closures will be all the streets adjacent to the park, so just a segment of four streets. And for both of these applications, we did post the premises in conjunction with state statute, and no comments were received. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to direct this one to Chris. We had a conversation earlier about liability concerning the River Park, based on a CML meeting that I went to that discussed the Golden River Corridor with their tubing and such. And our conversation kind of made me feel comfortable about the fact that the city wouldn't be really liable in some of the situations that happen over there. But my concern was now, and we talked about this too, now we're adding the alcohol question to the equation based on the question that I asked. And I was just concerned about perhaps our city liability and perhaps the clerk can make sure that they provide us with some kind of a certificate of insurance or liability or whatever, if that would be appropriate.
So we normally do for, when the city hosts an event, we usually do ask each vendor to provide a certificate of liability insurance, and I can check with the Funk Fest organizer and make sure we have that in the file.
And additionally, yes, we make everybody sign a waiver that participates in the Funk Fest, relieving us of as much liability as absolutely possible, since we are a sponsor of the event. And, you know, as stated to you, if someone just goes onto the river by themselves, they assume the liability of their activity within the river. So, yes.
Okay. I was just thinking that since I went to that meeting, it put a lot of questions in my mind, and I feel comfortable now, but I was sitting there thinking that, gee, are we creating a big problem? And kind of like Boulder has with their river, but I feel fairly comfortable now with your information and hers also. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Looks good, and we'll see this upcoming. Did we already say on a consent agenda? Yeah, thanks. Okay. That concludes our specific items. Was there anything a city council member wanted to discuss in particular? What a great segue, though, to talk about CML or the Colorado Municipal League, because we had a great conference. We haven't had a city council meeting since getting back two weeks ago from that, but it was a great conference, lots of informational, professional development for both elected officials and the staff members who were able to go. I know there are a lot of continuing legal education credits for attorneys. I think we all come away with a lot of good ideas, and I've already heard us talking about them and trying to kind of apply those best practices that we learn from other municipalities and that we're taught about at these conferences and put them into place where we see rooms and things the city could do better or differently. So great conference and super happy to have the city support that kind of education for us.
Well, I can tell you that. Well, I can tell you that it was new for me again. And there's a lot of things that I learned. And one of them was that when you sign up specifically for a class, if it doesn't meet your needs, and I didn't learn this until later on, you could always go to another one. You don't have to stay inside the room and listen to something that, that in the introduction sounded good, but didn't apply to the city of Montrose. It may apply to a big city in Denver. And I know that it was nice to have city staff there to answer some of the questions that were developed from my perspective about it. And I thought it was a good.
It's a great conference, isn't it?
It was a good conference.
Yep.
Would you like to mention your election?
No.
I just had a question for Scott and Jim. In looking at all the traffic that Woodgate is now taking on and with the roundabout coming, is there any thought given to maybe putting in a third lane for a turn lane along the business section?
Sorry, I missed that first part. Which retreat are you talking about?
Looking at, on Woodgate, with the roundabout going in and the amount of traffic that we're getting at the present time and the amount of traffic that's trying to turn in or out of all the businesses along there, it would appear that we could almost use a third lane, a turn lane in there to help some of that.
Absolutely, I agree. So, yeah, and they kind of saw that building even before the Woodgate realignment during the last boom. And that we have plans for rebuilding of Woodgate the entire way to get that third lane in there. That's kind of what it would take is, you know, the rebasing and widening of the road to, it's, there's not a lot to work with without fixing the drainage through there. It's a narrower right-of-way corridor. But absolutely, that is kind of, and that's on the capital plan is, you know, we got the roundabout piece. But independent of all of that, at any of those intersections, Odell especially, the left turn lane there, when one goes to hang left in the through lane, it kind of backs up the rest of it and nobody can ever get a gap to get out. That one will eventually be a roundabout as well in the capital plan. So those are all on the radar, really comes down to funding. It'll be pretty expensive to fix that whole corridor, given a lot of the drainage and constraints and the issue. But certainly agree, it's a, it's a warranted improvement.
Thank you.
Since the mayor wasn't going to mention, I'd like to mention the fact that she was re-elected to the CML executive board. So congratulations to Mayor Bynum.
Thank you.
Are, are we going to get reimbursed for all the money we spent buying votes?
I don't think we had to spend very much money buying votes. I did, I did try my best to network and earn the votes. And yeah, happy to be re-elected to that board. And, and I think it's important for Montrose to have a voice on that board. We talk about municipal issues across the state of Colorado. And for example, at our, at our meeting just last Friday, someone suggested that if people really cared, they'd show up in Denver for every meeting, not of the board, but to discuss policy. And I reminded that person who was from the Denver metro area that many of the municipalities in Colorado are much further away from the state capitol than he is. And that, that you, the amount you care is not directly related to showing up. That sometimes there's cost and travel and time involved. So I think it's important that we have representation from across the state on that board. And I am joined by colleagues in Grand Junction and Bayfield and Alamoosa, representing the side of Colorado on that board. Thanks. Anything else? Okay. Chief Hall, you're going to give us a 2A report card and second quarter crime statistic update, please.
Thanks, Mayor, City Council.
Get your microphone, please. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so I'll present the 2A report card first and then ask if you all have any questions and then some crime stats will follow. So 2A report card, we give this report card or generally give this report card every quarter to update some of the things that are happening in the police department based on the promises we made with the 2A initiative. So I think it's great. We're able to fully staff the four school resource officer positions that we promised the community. And that will occur in August. We just recently had testing for two of those positions. And Jeremy Payne and Peter Vandenhoek will join Travis Booth and Aaron Sheedy in the schools. And so that means we'll have a full-time SRO in the high school, a full-time SRO, one in each middle school. And then the fourth SRO will float between all of the elementary schools. And so out of everything here in the 2A report card today, I think that that's fantastic. We hired emergency manager Paul Eller. And also I wanted to give council an update on our K-9 program. So we had two officers, Officer Nayan Baka and Josh Lamphier away for the last four weeks of this month, attending K-9 training. They were assigned their two new German Shepherds Floki and Kilo, which are interesting names. Yeah, that's what I said too, huh? So, yes. That's all I can really say. Josh Lamphier will be assigned full-time to the Seventh Judicial Drug Task Force to support their efforts and, and quite a bit of highway interdiction that will occur out of that, that unit. And then Nayan will support our patrol division with the second K-9. These are not bite dogs, to be clear, so.
They are not, can you repeat that?
You bet. These are not bite dogs. These are, these are drug search dogs and then person search dogs.
Can you explain what a bite dog is?
Absolutely. So a bite dog is an animal that, or a shepherd usually, that when a police officer is in trouble or there's a high-risk building search that needs to occur, then the dog can be deployed. And its job, if it confronts a suspect that is non-cooperative, is to usually bite the suspect on the arm or leg, take it down and hold, take the person down and hold them there until essentially other police officers arrive. There's a lot of liability, honestly, in having a bite dog at a police department. It's not something that I would recommend for our agency. But definitely dogs have a place in law enforcement. And that really comes down, in my opinion, to drug searches and then person searches, both for children and for elderly.
So are you saying this would be more like the dogs that I've seen at Denver Airport? That they just take along the line that are smelling, I guess, for drugs?
That would be very similar.
But oftentimes find salami?
Yes.
Okay.
I think a lot of times those dogs that you see are specially trained to search for the precursors for bomb-making material.
Okay, not necessarily drugs, okay.
Well, drugs too. So it just depends. You bring up an interesting point in that these dogs are not trained to search out for marijuana and now psilocybin mushrooms. So that was also taken off the table. But still opiates, methamphetamine, things like that, these dogs are trained to, to search for. So the, there's been a bit of a delay in the program. We hope to get it up and running fully in the first month or first week of August. The vehicles that we ordered apparently received severe hail damage from the recent storm, hailstorms in Denver. And so they're getting repaired. And then we just can't seem to catch a break on vehicles. And then we'll, we'll get that program up and running. I'd like to talk about the Police Academy really quick. That's going very well. We have two cadets in that program. We've also used those two cadets to help support us and kind of introduce them to the Montrose community. So like the Fourth of July event, we used our cadets to help support that effort. And then coming up here, we plan on opening the TRAP grant. It's ready to go. I'll be contacting the board in the TRAP grant. Our at-least target is to open it up August 1st and close it August 30th. And then we'll move forward with that program.
That's theft reduction and prevention.
Thank you. Theft reduction and prevention program where we, we use 2A money to help our business owners install needed security improvements through our Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design program. And then I just wanted to let council know, don't forget that tomorrow at 5:30 PM in this room, we'll have our sergeants' penning ceremony. We promoted Police Officer Nick Gimm and Police Officer Cameron Pencil to the rank of sergeant. And we'll be doing that promotional ceremony here, very similar to how we handled the deputy chiefs and the commander promotionals. And then lastly, and I'll get this on city council's calendar, we decided to very promptly participate in the August 1st National Night Out event. And so we plan on doing that, actually right out here in Centennial Plaza in front of the police department. That is a council meeting night. It's always, it seems to always fall on a council meeting night. But we wanted to make sure and extend those hours so that if council gets over soon enough, you all or we all can go out and, and help be part of that event. So with that, are there any questions on the 2A report card? Okay. Then I'll quickly go over some second quarter crime stats. These crime stats are April through June. I'm not going to get too in-depth other than to say, in general, we continue to see some drop, a drop in crime rates, which I think is good, except for in the area of sexual assault. We have, we've all, we've actually more than doubled in this quarter compared to 2022, the number of reported sexual assaults. Most of those unfortunately are, as we, as I presented before, against children. But we have seen decreases in residential burglary. Our motor vehicle thefts are holding about the same, I think a really positive status. We've seen a 27% decrease, 53 reported domestic violence incidents in this quarter compared to 73 in last quarter. And our police officers in those three months handled 8,375 incidents. I would like to say that our felony arrests are also down a bit. We had 41 felony arrests in this last quarter compared to 2022. And our misdemeanor arrests are down slightly, probably due to just some of the reduction in felony crime. Our drug arrests are also down by about a quarter. I did want to bring up too, I put it in the packet just for review. If you all would like to see it, I won't go over it, except for the fact that for the first half of this year versus the first half of last year, our felony total, or felony crime totals are down by 39%. So we have 162 felony crimes reported in the first half of this year versus 267 crimes last year. So I appreciate all the hard work that our officers are doing. Finally, I'd like to bring up, it seems like this is always a hot topic in Montrose, code enforcement. Our code enforcement stats have increased quite a bit. Kevin Walters is out there every day right now. His mountain is weeds. And he has contacted or been part of 142 weed violations versus only 33 last year. I think he's just coming up on a year. So that's kind of where you see the transition between our prior code enforcement officer. For the PD and code enforcement, it's weeds, junked vehicles. And now we chase around transients and campers and motor homes constantly. So our junked vehicle incidents have increased. We had 15 in 2022 to 46 in '23. And our RV parking went from five to, to, to 26. So he's had a total of 452 incidents just in the first quarter, or excuse me, second quarter of this year versus 181 last year. So he's, he's getting with it. Any questions?
It seems like, it seems like the code violations, particularly weeds, are much more prevalent all over the community this year.
Yeah, I think a lot of that has to do with rain. We've, we've revamped just our, really our overall, I guess, process to begin with. Kevin used to go out and, and start with a verbal warning. And then if that didn't work, a week later, he would do the written notice, give them a certain amount of time, usually a week to two weeks. If that didn't work, and then he'd finally come back with a citation. So we've cut out the verbal warning. We, we go right to a written notice and then, and then go from there. So, thank you.
Thank you for the information. If, if anyone from the public wanted to follow up and they had questions, you'd be happy to talk about this with anyone.
Absolutely, yeah. We recently had the, the forum presentation for code enforcement. But any citizen that wants to talk about our crime stats or any of our particular divisions, be happy to talk with them. They just need to reach out.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that concludes our business of the day. We'll see you all for our city council meeting and the penning ceremony beforehand tomorrow night.